Good evening, everyone. First, I'll make a motion to reconvene in Hookedon Session at 7:00. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burr.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapeskis.
Next, I'll make a motion to seal the closed session minutes of the February 12th, 2020 meeting. Is there a second? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burr.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapeskis.
Will you please stand and join me for a moment's silence and a pledge, please? Athletic allegiance, alive, United States of America, and to the Father, who is stands on a nation, on a God, in his book, liberty, and justice for all. Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Borje.
Here.
Vice Chair Burr.
Here.
Mrs. Capwell.
Here.
Mrs. Nato.
Here.
Mrs. Kapeskis.
Here.
I understand we have visitors. We have Coleman Elementary School here tonight, so I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, good afternoon.
Hi, I'm Daniera Ortiz, I'm Principal Kevin K. Coleman Elementary School, and it truly is an honor to work with such dedicated staff, students, and families on a daily basis. I'm actually gonna have someone else lead the show tonight, someone who is very special, who's been with the Wensocket Education Department for over thirty years. She serves as our math interventionist, but also our school liaison, and is the person with the greatest Coleman spirit, who's always looking for the positive in our school, Ms. Judy Machaco.
Good evening, everyone.
Next, thank you. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. As Mrs. Ortiz already said, my name is Judy Machaco, and I am the math interventionist and parent liaison at Coleman School. Wonderful things have been happening at Coleman School. Besides keeping up with our academic rigor, we'd like to share a sampling of the kinds of neat things that are going on in our great school. In Mrs. Comtois' second-grade classroom, the students wrote letters to members of the military on Veterans Day. In Miss Pelosi's fourth-grade classroom, the students are following UNICEF Kid Power online to do a dance break before the start of our school day on a wellness Wednesdays. Students earn stars, and ten stars unlock a bag of rice that is sent to children in need. In Mrs. Eldkins and Mrs. Fox's first-grade classrooms, the students created Valentine's Day cards for the elderly residents at the balloon home. Each student participating in Mrs. Spur's Before-School Box Program received a new pair of Reebok sneakers in November. Every student, grades 5 through 5, made an ornament for Wensocket's Holiday Stroll Christmas Tree Contest. Our theme was Coleman pride, and boy, are we proud of our school. Speaking of pride, I'm going to turn it over to fifth-grade teacher, Mrs. Joanie, to share more news that makes us proud of our students.
Hi, this is Joanie, and in October, our class entered the Pookie Socka Contest, and six of our students were chosen to be published, and they are here tonight prepared to tell you about their experience.
My name is Alexis.
My name is Angel.
My name is Zoe.
My name is Amara.
My name is Sarah.
My name is Douglas.
I think I already said my name. When Ms. Joanie first told us the class that we were going to participate in a contest, we were all shocked, absolutely, and going, yeah, but then I didn't think I was gonna win the contest. I thought it was just like a go-all contest, and my entry, and then maybe they'll go, they participate, and I didn't think I was gonna win.
Um, good night, everyone. I want to thank, um, thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk about my experience. And I'm sure that my story, that they took me to the program, she felt excited, and very proud of herself, and of my classmates, and so, I was, it was a good time for me, and it felt good for me, too. I would like to thank my teacher, Mrs. Joanie, for letting me in and for opening to this contest. Uh, well, we should look into that in my parents' question, or maybe, yeah, your time.
I was very surprised when Ms. Joanie told us we were going to be in the contest, because I was nervous about writing my slogan, and it being shown to a lot of older people. My experience of making a slogan was fun and weird at first. I had gotten really into my story, because my boyfriend had recently moved in, so I had to choose the perfect name, and I decided to call it "There's a Step Off in Here." I was embarrassed, but really happy about being selected to be published. I was embarrassed because lots of people could see it, and I mostly liked my achievements to be shared about amongst my family and friends. Thank you for your time.
From what I experimented in the first place, I felt pretty uncomfortable, because the slogan, I just don't like when people write on my stuff. The sense of chosen as the winner, it was pretty shocking.
I was really surprised that I actually won, because I didn't know that I was a winner, so I actually believed myself that I was.
So their book is gonna be published in March, and it will be at Coleman's, if anyone was interested in taking the book. Thank you.
That was awesome. Great job. Daniera, what a staff you have, and your parents. Hopefully, Eo Mercur is proud of your children as we are of them. So again, congratulations. Now, is there anyone who'd like to address the school committee? If you'd like to, please come to the podium, tell us your name and address for the record. Seeing and hearing none. Is there someone? There we go.
There we go.
Good evening. So, um, we'd like to thank you, first of all, for approving such a wonderful added piece of curriculum to the middle school. And we thought tonight that we would demonstrate and show you how it's made such a wonderful impact on the school climate, and the faculty, and the students. But before we begin, I would like to take this time to also thank Bill Webb, because he is the person, the teacher, who came forward and had this wonderful idea. And because of this wonderful idea to bring us to the middle school, we now have what we call an encore program, and we're about to explain to all the dynamic classes that students are exposed to. And also, on behalf of Mrs. Renaldo and myself, we take a little credit in this, because we hired the awesome teachers that are running this program, and they are dynamic, they have added such wonderful climate, and such enthusiasm, and talk about personalization to our students. They are just a wonderful, great addition to the Wensocket School Conference. So.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is John Haley. I'm an I-Explore teacher at Villanova Middle School, and right here, this is Brody, one of my students, and he's about to give you this wonderful pamphlet that he is on the cover of. So, Brody, please go give one of these to everyone. So, I-Explore is a great program. I've seen my students excel at things such as interviewing, job skills, just getting an understanding of what a salary is, and how much money it takes to live in the world. But more than that, I get to see my students understand some jobs that they might love doing one day. And what I'm loving to really see is as they figure out that light at the end of the tunnel, as Mr. Webb talks about. So as we go through our curriculum, I tell my students, if you can't find a job that you like right now, there is an equal amount of value if you're finding a job that you don't like, so you're not spending time after high school going, do I like this job? And then finding out you don't. So, again, to find that light at the end of the tunnel, I'm gonna introduce some of our other teachers that are helping with that, and Mr. Ian Chudowski is coming up next.
Hi, I'm Ian Chudowski, I'm an I-Explore teacher at Villanova. We've been having a lot of fun with this program throughout the semester throughout the school year.
Excuse me, do they want to use the mic?
No, you're right.
Hi.
Hello.
Ian Chudowski, I'm an I-Explore teacher at Wensocket Middle School, Villanova. We've had a lot of fun with this class throughout the semester. It's a very hands-on class, so we developed simulations and hands-on activities for students to, you know, to experience these, all the various careers and jobs out there. For example, we had a lesson on being a, you know, an arson fighter investigator, so we set up a mob crime scene, we had, you know, various burnt pieces of wood, something like that. There were, set a fire in different kind of ways that students haven't worked to figure out, you know, was this like an accident, was this electrical fire, was this like an arson created by some point gasoline, a piece of wood setting a fire, things like that. So we did like a, kind of like a little mini snippet of what it's like to do these various careers. And then, we've had, you know, tremendous student, um, all right, sorry, tremendous response from the students, very positive remarks. For example, we had a lesson on photography, and so many students interested in it, that we actually ended up creating an after-school photography club. We have several, I think we have like eight or nine members in it now, and, you know, we have fun, we take photos, we learn how the various processes of taking photos. One of those students right there is Natalie Gonzalez. You know, so, these classes are just really rewarding and beneficial for the students, I feel. And we have many great teachers here, you know. We have Katie, and who else is here? Raise your hands. Oh, Karen, and I'm not too familiar with the Hamlet people, I'm sorry, but, uh, you would come up? Emily, yes, please come up.
Good evening, I'm Emily Vangelo, and I teach at the Hamlet Middle School, and we're having a lot of fun doing this. Really cool topic, I-Explore lets the kids sort of get a taste of different things that they can do when they get older, or maybe just find out a little bit more about what the medical field has to offer, or what it's like to work for the travel industry. And there's four teachers at Hamlet, and I believe there's four at Villanova, and we're all sort of teaching those same areas, but we all have our own personalities and our own ways of teaching, and able to kind of reach different types of kids, and I'm having a great time. I have a lot of experience where I went career education, and this was a really cool job that sort of came up, and I grabbed it, and it's a lot of fun, and it's great to see the kids coming and telling you guys, it's more of what do you get on them, and what they're getting out of it. And I've always seen these pictures, those are my kids telling me something about, by the way.
Hi, I'm Katie at Stupennis, and we have three students here who have, would like to say something about their experience with I-Explore so far. This is Brody, Natalie, and Kaylee.
Hey, my name is Brody. I am from Villanova Middle School. I think I-Explore class is a very good class. We learn about what houses we're gonna live in, and what jobs we're gonna do, and it helps us out a lot.
Hi, my, hi, my name is Natalie, and I'm from Villanova Middle School, and at Ms. Bell's class, I was challenged, and I had a lot of fun. She taught me a lot of things that I could be using for the rest of my life for career development. At that school, I was introduced to photography, and in photography, I was able to show my creativity in different ways, and, thank you.
Hi, my name is Judy, and I did I-Explore, but it's a great place during the day where we get to work together in small rooms, group events, on activities, and everything that helps us plan our future.
Overall, we hope to take away that we're really excited about the class, we're having a great time teaching it, we're excited about how engaged students are, enthusiastic, and we're really excited about what we think the future has in store for I-Explore, so thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the school committee? Please come up. Come to the podium, state your name and address for record.
Hi, everyone. I'm Brody's mom. A lot of you guys have played a role in our family. I assume Ms. Holt used to be Brody's elementary school teacher. Dawn used to cheerlead with me in high school, and half the committee staff was the judges at the Future Chef last year. So, you guys play a huge role, and with that being said, like, I do love the fact that Brody was in the I-Explore class. One evening, we were making breakfast, and he says, you know, do you have debt, Mom? Where did that come from? And he says, wow, I'm just saying, we kind of talk about debt, a mortgage, zero, indeed. I'm like, whoa, like, what are you really learning at school? So with that being said, it's such a huge life lesson, because I personally didn't know that when I was growing up. As now as you're older, you know, then because we don't have debt and all that stuff, it's been played, it's safe and like, but for him to know at such a young age, it's gonna help him grow, and it's gonna help you guys in the future as well. So, I hope that this class does stay, it's really great, and it's a great conversation piece with, you know, with me and my kids. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee, let's go into recognitions and announcements, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to congratulate the wonderful students, our I-Explore students and staff at Hookedon Socket Middle School, Villanova, and Hamlet. Know that when we thought about this, this program last year, Mr. Webb, I think, is Mr. Webb?
Yeah, he's here.
Mr. Webb, you wanna stand, Mr. Webb?
Please.
I was, I was, I don't wanna say I was a little nervous, but I was, but I knew that Mr. Webb, and Mrs. Granado, and Mrs. Renaldo, in coordinating this, I knew that they would do a great job, and we quickly have some wonderful teachers here in our, in our district, and we have some amazing students, so I'm just very proud of everyone in this program, and it's just very exciting, just one of many, many examples of the great things going on in this district. So, congratulations to all of our I-Explore students and teachers and staff. I'd also like to recognize Coleman Elementary School, you know, they demonstrated this evening that beyond academics, they give back to the community in many, many ways, and we're very, very proud of our Coleman students and our Coleman staff as well. And actually, one of my recognitions is Mrs. Joanie and her students, and I'm gonna get to that in a second, so, actually, I'm gonna start with that. Congratulations to Ms. Sarah Joanie, fifth-grade teacher of Kevin K. Coleman Elementary School, and her students for being selected as winners of the Young Writers Spooky Challenge Sagas Contest, which is sponsored by Young Writers. This fall, twelve of Sarah's students submitted mini saga writing pieces to Young Writers, which promotes literacy and creativity, and whose aim is to encourage young writers to enjoy reading and writing poetry. Six of the twelve students were selected to have their writing pieces published in Spooky Sagas 2019 New England Tales. What makes their accomplishment most impressive is the fact that over 10,000 entries were submitted. Sarah's students' creativity and passion for writing comes from her enthusiasm for teaching writing, and for the high expectations she holds for all of her students. Thank you, Sarah, for your dedication to both your students and your craft in promoting literacy in our district, and again, let's, let's give a round of applause to the wonderful students. Congratulations to the Wensocket Education Department for receiving the Young Children's Champion Award by Rhode Island Kids Count at the Rhode Island Kids Count Celebrating Young Children Luncheon, which was held on January 27th at the Province Marriott. The award is presented to organizations that possess leadership and commitment to meeting the needs of young children and their families throughout Rhode Island. The Wensocket Education Department received this distinguished award for its itinerant 3K model that was made possible through collaboration with the Wensocket Head Start. This award and recognition would not have been possible without the very hard work of the following people. I'd like to, like to recognize each of them. Some of them are here this evening, some of them are not. Dawn Morrell. Steve Riso. Beth Campinelli. Melissa Moniz. Al Latariani. Janet Sullivan. Melissa Custer. And the executive director of the Wensocket Head Start, Mary Mar, who's not here this evening. I'd like to also congratulate the 39 underclassmen who were inducted into the Honor Society at Wensocket High School on January 23rd. I was able to attend, as I attend every year. Many members of the Socket School Committee were there, and again, it was, it was another opportunity for us to recognize the truly wonderful students that we have at Wensocket High School and across our district, so I'd like to congratulate those students as well. Congratulations to Harris Elementary School teachers and LEED Box School trainers Trish Morgan and Bethany Perpalli for being named Box Defenders of Physical Activity, February Award winners for Rhode Island. Trish and Beth, right, I think, I think you're here this evening, would you mind standing? Box, which stands for Build Our Kids Success, is a free physical activity program that promotes, that improves our children physically, mentally, and socially through movement, and promotes the health and wellness of our elementary students by providing them the opportunity to participate in before-school physical fitness activities. Harris Elementary School will receive a Defenders of Physical Activity trophy for the school, a $300 grant for their box program, T-shirts and medals for all students who are enrolled in the program, and the eligibility for entry in the Box Defenders of Physical Activity Program of the Year Contest, the winner of which will receive a $2,500 grant to support their box programming. Trish and Beth will be formally honored at Harris Elementary School on February 26th. I believe that the school committee has been invited to that celebration, and I look forward to, to being there that day, as I'm sure the school committee does as well. Lastly, I would like to wish everyone a very safe and happy February vacation. Last day of school is Friday. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Does anyone have any comments on the superintendent's report, the announcements? No? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file, recognitions and announcements, is there a second?
Second.
Hold the favor. Next, I'll make a motion to approve the January 22nd, 2020 open session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections, revisions, adjustments? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burr.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapeskis.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any school committee member who'd like to take any of these items out separately to discuss?
We do, all right, yes, Chairman, if you'd prefer to transfer.
Mrs. Capwell.
I'm trying to inquire, there's a $23,000 or so requisition in here for home care, and when looking at the backup, it indicated that it was for a student or child that was turning three years of age. Sorry. So there was a requisition for a $23,000 in home care for a child that was three years of age, just looking for any backup of details to what, what that stands for. Or if it was a, a miss. Do you want me to send it, do you want me to send the details after?
Yeah, would you send the details, because there's a couple of things where...
Okay. All right, I just didn't wanna state any names out loud necessarily, or, no, okay. I can call upon that separately, Chairman.
Is there anything else? Then, Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burr.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapeskis.
Yes.
Since we've already heard the wonderful presentation of I-Explore, we'll move along to the superintendent's report. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm gonna update the committee on the district's strategic plan, which is going, that process has already started. I'm just gonna give you a, sort of a timeline with the steps of what to expect. So, the school department has contracted with a company called Teaching and Learning Alliance. We've met, we met with the consultants on February 3rd to plan out the process, and the process is gonna be a seven, eight-step process. The first step in the process is we're going to be identifying members of a steering committee, strategic planning committee, and we're gonna be establishing five focus groups. Those five focus groups are going to be groups of constituents in the, in the district and in the community, which include the SELAC, Special Education Local Advisory Council, our English language learner families, as well as the community, district staff, teachers, and so on and so forth, district leadership, as well as the school committee. The steering committee is going to be made up of, of just members of the committee outside of the school department, and the final group is going to be the strategic planning committee, which will be made up of staff within the district, and the actual plan is gonna be put together by that strategic planning committee. Step two, which will begin in March, the consultants will review the district data, which will be submitted to them, and data will include a variety of, you know, Rycast data, STAR data, Achieve 3000 data, a variety in, in district data, and district-created data, as well as statewide data. And they will conduct focus groups with those five groups on March 2nd and March 3rd. Those focus groups will then provide feedback to the strategic planning committee. Step three is gonna take place in March and April, at which time the steering committee will focus on current district vision, mission, and core values, which we've already established in our current plan, five-year plan. Those mission, vision, and core values will be established to then share with the strategic planning committee, if they, if in fact they change from the first, from the last plan to the next plan. Step four, March and April, the strategic planning committee will meet two times to create a draft of the district vision, mission, and core values. Step five, in April and May, the strategic planning committee will meet twice to draft those goals, those pillars, which are gonna be three to five overarching goals, and the strategies will accompany each of those goals. Step six will occur in April and May, the consultants will prepare a draft of the district goals, pillars, and strategies to share with the strategic planning committee, which will lead to step seven in May, where the district's strategic plan will be We have 13 areas of priority, and it feels though three years, we have three to five really strong goals, and that are, the chances of our really focusing on those and meeting those goals within three years is much greater than if we try to push out beyond that.
Anyone else?
The second, my second agenda item is just an update on the community advisory boards. As the committee is aware, Kevin Coleman Elementary and Vernon Heights are both schools that have been classified as comprehensive schools. As such, the first role, the first job of the school is to create a community advisory board, which is made up of anywhere from eight to 10 or 12 people from the community, also from members of the school department. And the charge of the community advisory boards has been to work with the key organization around creating a needs assessment and root cause analysis. To date, Vernon Heights has conducted three meetings of the CAB, their third one was actually this afternoon. And Coleman has conducted their three CAB meetings so far. There probably will not be any more CAB meetings, at least for the time being, until we get a little further along in the process. The next timeline of the needs assessment and root cause is due to RYE on February 21st. So the principals are going to be starting the process of taking the needs assessment, putting it together into a document, and it will be submitted into RYE on February 21st. And the final strategic plan is due to RYE on May 15th. And that final strategic plan is going to be after the root cause analysis has been approved by RYE. It then comes back, and that's when the school improvement team, in collaboration with the CAB, actually create the strategic plan, which is really sort of the meat and potatoes of the world moving forward.
Does RYE send representatives to the schools during this process?
If we need assistance, they will. They typically have not. You know, last year, when we went through this process with Harris Elementary School, we really didn't need them to come out. That part of the process, we've really, any clarification has really been already done. You know, we've reached out to RYE prior to where we are now. So really, from here on out, it's really the school and the district putting the plan together.
So it's a plan to be implemented after May or for the next year?
The next year, exactly.
Okay. So the improvements that we're going to be looking for, for those new schools, is the next year?
Right. That's right.
Anyone? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the school subcommittee reports. We'll start with health and wellness. Vice Chair Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Health and Wellness Committee met this past Monday at the HAM school here in 124, and we considered a few items that were necessary for our review. The first thing we did is we welcomed a needed student representative to our Health and Wellness Committee. Her name is Ava Perry. She is a sophomore at the high school, and she's also involved in the healthcare program at the career tech center. So it was great to find a student representative on the committee. We looked at our breakfast program, and we looked at it, and it was a lot of kudos for us. As you know, the governor now is trying to foster a breakfast program, and a lot is being provided. But we have found that in Wensocket, we're ahead of the game. Our breakfast program works, we have a lot of different ways that it works. Other districts have come to examine how we make our breakfast program work in our elementary schools and our middle school. So we've been doing quite well with that. So we're kind of proud of how that finally has been smoothed out, and it works quite well. We also talked a little bit about the Don Quin Fitness Center, that as you know, became part of Citizens early in this year.
Yes.
That was the end result of, was it a $100,000 grant? A $100,000 grant was received by the school over at this competition. And Principal Monays came and gave us an update on the students that are using the Fitness Center grants, or five, the teachers and faculty that are making use of it. So it's been really a great addition to the Citizens community. And obviously, the Box program that we heard mentioned at Harris School was also very strong as Citizens, and they may use it as well. There was a program called URI Snap Ed Program, and it's basically revolves around, it's called Students Take Charge. And some of our students will be involved in making presentations somehow throughout the next, I guess, the next couple of months, dealing with nutrition programs. We've had several students that won grants with nutrition programs, so we're really quite proud of the interest and the involvement that we've seen with our students. We also had a discussion on our mental health policy. Earlier this year, the Health and Wellness Committee added a mental health policy to its original Health and Wellness Policy, because we found it to be most important that we addressed the mental health needs of our students. And that policy was written primarily by Kevin Lamero, who had put together a great policy, and he reviewed it with us again at our meeting, because this policy too is going to be shared with other districts throughout the state, who are looking to update their health and wellness policies and add to the mental health. So we're quite proud of accomplishments that we have done with that particular policy. And finally, it's about all. We have the, what's that called, the Two Chefs Program coming up, and I've been lucky to be, by the way, to be a judge as well as Mrs. Nato, so we are looking forward to be part of the Two Chef Program this fall. And our next Health and Wellness meeting will be Monday, March 9th, at the school here, 124, at 4:00. And I believe that covers most of the discussions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burke. You're too much lucky, you're going to be judging a heck of a contest. Does anyone have any comments? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Health and Wellness Update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll look at the policy update. Mrs. Kaviskas.
Mr. Chair, the process subcommittee met yesterday here at Wensocket Middle School in Hamlet at 4:00 p.m. We discussed two policies. One is a Title IX policy, and the other is a student discipline policy. And as the whole agenda items, I think, business, I would probably defer further discussion to that point. And that concluded our meeting. We discussed those two policies, or those two policies alone. The next policy subcommittee meeting is on March 3rd at 4:00 p.m., also paired with the middle school, 124.
Thank you, Mrs. Kaviskas. And since we've been talking about those policies, I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a policy update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the curriculum update. Mrs. Kaviskas.
The curriculum subcommittee met today here at Wensocket Middle School in Hamlet at 124, 1:00 p.m. We discussed six agenda items. The first was an update on Achieve 3000 data, which demonstrated the progress students are making and advancement of their ELA levels as a result of the use of the Achieve 3000 program, and has explained to us how the program is adaptable to students' levels, students with special needs, such as students with special needs or students with ELL. We also discussed, at Wensocket High School, increased academic action plan, which was essentially, as we previously explained to us, any school is charged with developing a way to address the Rite Cast scores. The high school is charged with developing a way to address the PSATs, the SAT scores, and this was an explanation as to what their action plan is to address those scores. We discussed computer science programming, A through 12, in a wonderful demonstration of a robot reading a story. And I basically talked about coding and teaching students coding at the youngest levels, including kindergarten. And one of the programs talked about how you can learn how to code even though your teacher doesn't know how to, which I thought was kind of interesting. We received CAB updates from Dr. McGee and Dr. Holt, very similar to what we've already received, so we'll skip that. We got an update at the chair's request of the professional development hours of our educators, based on the amount of hours required to meet under their contract. We were wanting to track to make sure that everyone was on topic within those hours. And then we had a discussion, Eric Caprile from the high school, about the submission of a final grant application into the XQ grant. It's due, the application was due at 5:00 today, and the decisions will be made in March, I believe you said March 10th?
March 10th, yes.
So she'll keep us updated as to the progress with regard to those grants. The next curriculum subcommittee meeting is scheduled for April 8th at 1:00 p.m. here at Wensocket Middle School in Hamlet.
Any comments, questions from Mrs. Kaviskas? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the curriculum update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mrs. Kaviskas, would you lead us into the CLAC update?
It's Megan. CLAC met on February 6th, and we started at 6:30 in our old business. We discussed with parents in fourth room and our scheduled meetings for February and March. We discussed a presentation that was given to the transition student families, students and families at the high school on RYE bus passes, as well as guardianship. And we discussed with Dr. McGee an update with regard to the handicap parking situation, most notably at the high school, but at some of the other elementary schools. Underneath business, we discussed indeed to update the webpage for CLAC, as I'm still with the chair, and I am no longer chair. We discussed whether or not parents would like to see presentations, and at our meetings about particular items of interest, one was guardianship, another one is an explanation of where alternate assessments are. Another parent was to give more information on ORS, the Office of Rehabilitated Services for Buda, behavioral health, developmental disabilities, and hospitals? BD, BH, DH. And also maybe presentation with regard to the Bible Core meetings. The superintendent spoke to us about the strategic plan, the CABs at Vernon and Millman. We revisited an issue about funds at high school being answered promptly, a couple of parents were trying to instill self-respect. Dr. McGee also spoke to us about, how to say, Donna Spencer from the Grodin Center, where there's this therapeutic force care program, and they were just trying to expand that program in Wensocket. I, as the liaison for the school committee, explained that we had Title I and student excluded, or student discipline policies coming out. At this meeting event, we had, as parents asked about field trips and field trip policies, we indicated that we inferred that policy pending for the guidance from RYE, as well as decision from the legislature, on various statutes that are pending before them. A parent expressed concern about special needs classes being excluded from field trips. In particular, Dr. Sullivan expressed the difficulty in time we're having in finding and hiring future assistants and PCs for security and as parent professionals. And that we also have a significant error, especially with teachers funding school card emergency certification, and that we may lose some of those teachers going forward. A parent raised question about not having a local visitor son in elementary school, and the loss of a Title I reading teacher at Villanova. And also, a parent raised a question about their students starting kindergarten, teacher not receiving the IDP until some months later. Those issues were all addressed publicly and then privately with the parents who raised them by Dr. Sullivan and Dr. McGee. The next meeting of the CLAC is on Thursday, March 5th here at Wensocket Middle School in Hamlet, 124.
Any comments, questions from Mrs. Kaviskas? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the CLAC update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The facilities subcommittee met Tuesday at 8:00 p.m., and I wish we got popcorn to sell, because we had a capacity crowd. We were only 20 in the room, and we had to keep borrowing chairs. Thank God we had a plane. I've never seen a conference room so full. So to give us, what I like to do is to ask Director Latariani, just give us a brief summary of the items, because we covered quite a few items.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So we began the discussion talking about our transportation needs, in particular, the mileage requirements or the mileage requirements on to qualify for a bus, which Durham's currently exploring those numbers and refining them. We're going to meet again on Friday and talk in the near future with the facilities subcommittee about some recommendations. We then continue with the discussion regarding the facilities projects, where we order the work order system, heating units throughout the district, particularly near the middle school, some door alarm systems that we're going to look to explore, along with closing down the Savoy real project, and some of those final touches on that, and the paperwork that's, period, I believe, has submitted to RYE after this meeting. We also talked about parking lot management, in particular, the issues for our floor from CLAC, with Dr. McGee and Dr. McEvo, making sure that we have the appropriate number of handicap locations, handicap spot parking spaces at the high school block in particular. But what we decided to do is study and look at all the handicapped parking spaces throughout the district, and we're going to make some adjustments soon after the February break. Particularly, the high school will be making sure that there are numerous parking spaces, and specifically, we're going to be administering parking spaces further down and putting the handicap plate parking lot spaces closest to the front entryway. In addition to that, we're also looking at a particular issue with Coleman in terms of the side entrance and where cars park, and what we can do to make sure that student traffic is safe there. After that, we discussed the five-day capital plan, which is actually a two-part discussion item. One was closing down the current five-day capital plan, which there are some remaining projects that we need to conclude until summer of 2020, in particular, playgrounds at Savoy, playground at Citizens, along with some very large issues at both here and at US. And then we proceeded with the conversation of the upcoming five-day capital plan and the establishment of a school building committee, or initial number of school building committees, which will be voted on later in the second quarter, along with the document submission that has already occurred with RYE and the pending document submission, which is our stage one application, which is on Monday, February 17th. We then discussed briefly chief officer, police resource officer update, in terms of the main power of the police department currently under, and in terms of probably the staff, the several positions in the district currently short of staff, the police department short of staff. And our final discussion items were playground inspections, particularly at Harris Elementary School, where we have some equipment that needs to be repaired, along with some replacement of mulch or some other type of safe material just to be placed on the ground because of wear and tear of weather and use over the years. We talked about crossing guards, all positions have been filled, we're expecting everyone to be on the job by the end of this month if they haven't already started, and that's handled all on entry schools. And the last two items were consideration of the time clocks, installing of our buildings for some staff in the district, if something were exposed with 11:30 set in the future. And the last update provided by Dr. McGee in particular is the threat assessment team update, which we're required to have threat assessment teams on that, for that matter.
Just a couple of things that we discussed, just to add to what we
which will be voted on later in the second year, along with the document submission that has already occurred with RIDE and the pending document submission, which is our stage one application, which is on one day, February seventeenth. We then discussed briefly Chief Coast, the school resource officer update, in terms of the main power of the police department currently under, and in terms of probably if they have staff, the several positions in the district currently short of staff, the police department short of staff. And our final discussion items were playground inspections, particularly at Harassell Elementary School, where we have some equipment that needs to be repaired, along with some replacement of mulch or some other type of safe material just to be placed on the ground because of wear and tear with weather and use over the years. Talked about crossing guards, all positions have been filled, we're expecting everyone to be on the job by the end of this month if they haven't already started, and that's handled all on entry schools. And the last two items were consideration of the time clocks installed in all our buildings for some staff in the district, if something were postponed with eleven thirty seven in the future. And the last update provided by Dr. McGee in particular is the threat assessment team update, which we're required to have threat assessment teams on that for that much.
Just a couple of things that we discussed, just to add to what Mr. Notorianni said, is the transportation. We were expecting the doormat to give us a matrix of the total number of elementary students that are in our district, where they're located by clusters, and to look at the needs of how, you know, how could we bust them off, or as many as we could within certain range limit? So we looked at, it was mile, three quarters of a mile after mile. However, they didn't provide the cluster information that I wanted to see, but not only that, as Mr. Perry pointed out, because they didn't have the right number of students. They had seven hundred short in their analysis. So obviously, there will be some further meetings with our transportation company, and I would hope that our director will get the information to review before it comes to the subcommittee the next time, so we're dealing with the right set of nodes, so the analysis can be made as to what we're wanting to do. Because obviously, the total number of buses, the cost per bus, the cost to the district can be analyzed and reviewed. And hopefully, they do cluster the children by area, so that we know where to be the most, the most number of buses, the additional buses we're going to need. So I'm sure that's going to be worked out. And Chief Coast said, you know, he's got a staffing problem, he's had retirements, he's had transfers, he's got seven officers that are finishing school or the training center, and they'll be graduating soon. So we're going to be down to three for a while, but we'll be in full confidence very shortly, once everything moves back to normal. So far, we're still going to keep an officer in the high school and one in the children's schools. Other than that, everything, you know, Mr. Notorianni covered pretty much everything that we spoke about. Our next meeting is scheduled for March third at eleven AM at McPhee. Are there any comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick comment. Several weeks ago, I believe, you sent us all an email that there was a call to the two facilities department, a cleanup of all the schools. How did that work out? Was it a weekend, all schools together?
Yeah, so we, it was overtime on Saturday and Sunday, and our facilities and custodial staff went to all the buildings and cleaned the desktops, doormats, and outlets, which is just to be proactive. They did so over the holiday break in December as well, and I anticipate we'll probably do it again sometime in March, and they did the enable just to be proactive. Mr. Chairman, there is one item I left off, and we did talk about the 3K.
Yes.
I'd like to see that, that was proactive.
When they're into the schools, how do they find them? Were they generally up to snuff, I know we're doing some extra cleaning, or how was it found in schools?
They'd be very clean when I, when I met them, I'm not.
Good, that's excellent. I'll make, is there anything else? Okay, I'll make a motion to receive and place on file of facilities update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We decided to postpone the financial, the finance subcommittee meeting because we're still gathering some information that's necessary for us to reveal and analyze, and that meeting will be held on February nineteenth at McPhee at ten o'clock. That's all, yes. On one second, February nineteenth. Next, we'll receive the report of the technology subcommittee. Mrs. Kapwell.
Thank you, Chairman. So the technology subcommittee met on Tuesday, February fourth at six PM at the McGee Building. We too had ample attendance, and then the subcommittee member per usual was present. I'm going to go through the agenda topics, and I would just ask Vice Chair Burke and or COO, Mr. Notorianni, to weigh in as necessary. We kicked off by talking about the technology RFP. So if the committee called the last meeting, we did approve for the technology department to, and Mr. Perry, to submit an RFP for replacement technology hardware for the district. While that is still happening, it's worth noting that we're just putting a one month or so pause on getting that out. There are some new model considerations through the special education department that needs to be taken into consideration. That way, we are going out with the correct RFP the first time. This one month pause will have no negative reflection on the backend when it comes to being able to receive it and get it back from the committee in time for the expiration of our third technology hardware. Next, we touched upon data and ride reporting. So the committee will be cleaning up some of its data and presenting out a March snapshot. I don't know, Mr. Notorianni, is there anything you'd like to add in way of color for the committee with the ride reporting?
Just on time right now, as the capwell said, we're making sure that it's cleaned and it comes up. This is a key data point that determines our state aid, what they estimate our additional state aid for when we're coming to school here, so we pay particular attention to that.
Next, we too talked about time clocks. It was noted that this is a pro and con type of exercise exploratory in nature at this point, in that it will be identified and discussed through multiple subcommittee meetings. So we're looking forward to hearing more about where you're going down with that exercise. Technology policies. So again, when we were before the committee at the last meeting, we talked about the exercise effort underway to basically rein in Robe Facebook and other type of social media, ways in which varying department members may be communicating out information. At that time, it was acknowledged that there would need to also be an exercise put forth to be putting some sort of policies around this. At the time, there was an understanding that we may be starting to construct this. However, after doing some due diligence, they identified that indeed there is a policy in place that we can just now take a look at, and that will be then brought forth to the policies subcommittee meeting. So a nice foundation for us to move forward with on that. Our next meeting date is April seventh, same time, same place, six PM at the McGee Building.
Any comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, another item, the technology committee did express their empathy to Vice Chairman Burke, who had his good night in socket reading go up against the Super Bowl. And as a result, few people heard make way to that.
Let's make that plug right now, Vice Chair Burke.
It's still five minutes.
You probably have two minutes by now, Vice Chair Burke. Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file of the technology update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Notorianni, would you give us the technology and facilities update?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So this evening, seeing three standard requests, we always review, but before reviewing those, one of the projects which, in the last thirty days, was, we're having reported that we assembled a projector, document camera, cots for the Montsaket High School Special Education Department. Most other schools, so the elementary, the middle school level, every classroom has a projector, document camera, and cot to monkey to the ceiling. At the high school, this is another building, wasn't part of the original initiative, we're starting to backfill, so the special department received their equipment a couple of weeks back. In addition to that, and going to the state reporting, one of the other reports that is going to be submitted this month, not the March, or snap, but about next month, is the career and technical education data, which is an important upload because that directly factors into the school court card for the Montsaket High School, so the star rating there. So this is one of the factors in terms of determining the star score rating rather for high school. Moving on to the reports, during the last thirty days, there are four hundred and sixty-five work orders closed, twenty-three resolved, which we will move forward with column in a week. Fourteen declined, eleven assigned, seven new, four that we're waiting feedback from, several duplicates, a couple of parts on order, some waiting for advantage and some that are in progress. So this has been quite a busy month in the last thirty days. The second report is the response time to only close a work order, and it's back down to about two days, which we really like to see that. Obviously, we like to see less than that, but if you recall, all the last couple months did several circumstances or scenarios. It was hovering around three to four days, so happy to see it back down to the nominal two that we usually see. And the last report is the customer satisfaction report, which is indicative of the work performed by our staff and dissatisfaction of the staff in terms of the work performed. I have the report, the report satisfied individuals total out of, what you can see in the chart, there's well over a hundred responses. Of those four, two were miscommunications, and when I say miscommunications, example I give, which is an actual example for one of these, where someone asked for a particular branding document camera, and we use one particular branding, we were letting another, and they were dissatisfied, they were told, no, they can't have the brand they want, they have to use the brand we use here for the district. There was one miscommunication where these equipments were brought back to be repaired, and the ticket should have been moved to work in progress, and it accidentally was put down dissolved, and they mocked it, dissatisfied, reached out and resolved it. And then one was a staff member that requested that they have an issue with the copy machine, and we indicated that they need to copy eight hundred number and put it to the main office because that to give services, not, you know, through IT, it's actually directly with the copy company. So all in all, satisfied with the satisfaction report of the last year. That includes the technology.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file, the technology update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
So for you, this evening, you have the standard facilities update. Before I move into the actual reports, I would like to note, so when we started tracking the facilities work orders, we had approximately eight hundred or over eighty work orders backlog, and we discussed how someone were dating back to two fiscal years. I have the report, as of this evening, there are only two work orders from prior fiscal year, and they're the most recent or immediate past fiscal year, so they are from June of the last fiscal year, and we're expecting to have those closed out in the next month or so, because they're detail oriented in terms of parts. Moving forward, we have approximately eighty work orders in the system, half of which are plumbing work orders, which are performed by outside contractors. So there are only about forty work orders in the system that our facility staff have to respond to. We're working towards the goal, as I indicated, like, versus assuming the facilities department responsibility, we're working towards the goal of having a response time of within a couple of weeks, and I'm very confident by the spring they will be at that point, at which time, as you may also recall, we discussed in the past, teachers are not directly allowed to, they're not allowed to directly put work order requests into the system, they have to put them in the office. Based on the fact that we're caught up with work orders, we respond to emergencies when they happen by a phone call for this work order, considering movement of the work order system to allow staff to directly put the facilities work orders in when they have an issue with their classroom. I think in the long run, it will build confidence in the system. You know, as we get field time reporting versus the staff member having to call to the office to say, you know, my window looks like it's cracked, and then waiting for the secretary to put it in, and then we don't get any feedback from the staff. So based on the progress, which I'm very happy with in terms of their response, we're going to look to change the way the work order system works, and I think some of this report will be more reflective of the good work that they're doing in the department. So moving on from that, over the last thirty days, we've closed out fifty-seven work orders, twenty-two are waiting for contractors, ten are assigned out, nine are new, three are resolved, two are waiting for vendor, vendor versus contractor, license contractor versus vendor, which is one of that. Two have been declined, and two would get work orders. So again, they're making very steady progress. Our response time down to nine days, which again is always reflective of the response time, because we have a leak, they respond immediately, we have a leak above, they respond immediately, there's an insect infestation responding issue. And then the last report you have in front of you was the work order satisfaction report. As you can see, we're actually giving some feedback, all of it's been satisfied, there have been no unsatisfied reports in the facilities custodial area. So again, they've made some significant progress in terms of what they're, the work being involved. So that includes the facilities update.
Thank you, Mr. Notorianni. I have one question. Like you said, you might, you're considering changing the work order system, then adding staff, input the work orders, will they on that form, the digital form, identify if something is critical or, you know, not critical, so that you can identify and prioritize, or do you treat everything as critical?
So they have the ability, just like in the technology work order system, to identify something that's critical. The tricky part of it is, is, so our process is this for technology, which I would suggest would be the same process with facilities, which is staff are allowed to put a work order into technology, and they're allowed to mock it as critical. What we felt staff was outlined in our procedure that was rolled out in place through my position with the technology director, was that you put the work order in, and you contact your building administrator and say, this is, I mock it critical, this is critical, this is critical, and you call technology to let them know that it's really impacting instruction, teaching and learning. That's how we address it, yeah. We might see it's critical, yeah, and they might think it's critical, but it might not be critical because something else even worse is going on in a different building. So we do have a kind of a filter in terms of subjecting it to the building administrators to review in terms of data to determine that it's absolutely critical, and then we'll have a conversation. If you notice the field memo that Dr. McGee sent out, the first thing it says in facilities, it doesn't say in technology, this is the process we always have, but in facilities it states, if you have a critical issue, you're not receiving a response fast enough. Over the last, not the last one, but the previous maybe month, it says, please call my office, and if you're still not getting satisfaction of the response time you need, please call me on my cell phone. So there is a mechanism in place for something that is super critical to be addressed immediately by just picking up the phone. So there will be an effort to do that. We do have staff currently that, there's nothing that stops them from putting work orders in for facilities. So we do get some direction from the staff already.
Anyone? I'll make a motion to receive, place on file of the facilities update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have one item of unfinished business. It's discussion and approval of the Montsaket School Committee, uh, School, what is WOC?
College School Committee.
Committee, it's us. Fair Funding Formula Resolution, which we tabled at the last meeting. Therefore, I'll make a motion to remove this item of this agenda, from this agenda item from the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Go, 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 Dr. McGee.
Chairman Bourgey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
No, I'm taking it away from the table. I'm taking it off the table.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nada?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaviskas?
It's on the table. It's off the table, it's for us to discuss.
Mr. Chair, I ask that if you remove from the table for a simple reason that I'd like to withdraw without prejudice at this time.
So are you making any motion?
Yes.
I'll second that motion. Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bourgey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nada?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaviskas?
Yes.
Next, we'll go into new business. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve Title Nine policy and the other one is the next item on the agenda. The Title Nine policy, just to give you a brief summary, is a policy intended to protect students from conduct, which allows sexual harassment and discrimination, has the effect of integrating with the students' ability to participate in and receive benefits from the Montsaket Education Department's educational program, and includes conduct between current facilities, a school box, and a class or training program in another location elsewhere. We have committed need to adopt a policy that has compliance with state and federal law. At the policy subcommittee meeting yesterday, we need some additional changes to the proposed policy that was before us, and we have all were sent a red line and a clean copy of the policy by Attorney Tivo last night. And all present at the policy subcommittee meeting ordered in favor of sending this matter forward to the school committee in first passage. I stand ready to answer your questions, and I'm sure Vice Chair Burke does as well as Attorney Tivo. Mrs. Kapwell?
Thank you, Chairman. I have a few, I guess, questions, comments, some are less important than others. So starting with the definitions section, we have a definition for hostile sexual environment, but I don't then see that
Mrs. Capwell?
Thank you, Chairman. I have a few, I guess, questions, comments, some are less important than others. So starting with the definitions section, we have a definition for hostile sexual environment, but I don't then see that term listed anywhere else within the document. So I'm wondering if there should be taken, either I'm missing it or should it be taken out? And if not, there seems like there could be a place for it in complaint procedure when it states that the procedure is applied to students alleging sex-based discrimination, including sexual harassment and sexual violence, which are two of the other definitions, and immediately following after could then also include hostile sexual environment if desired.
I could be wrong, but I believe hostile sexual environment is defined with a top of each two.
Is defined, but then it's not.
Because it's the word in the definition.
In the document. So it's just a thought.
I think that the change that you're proposing would be to include hostile sexual environment.
Would you screen looking up the slide? Can you draw?
I think that, hold on. I think that, can you?
Kind of. Do you want to decline? You can chair.
There we go. That works.
I think that the proposed provision would be to amend the first paragraph of the complaint procedure to state that the reporting procedure is applied to students alleging sex-based discrimination, including sexual harassment, sexual violence, and hostile sexual environment would be appropriate given hostile sexual environment is a form of sex-based discrimination. It's a subset of sex discrimination. So references throughout the policy to sex-based discrimination would include both sexual violence and hostile sexual environment as well as sexual harassment. However, if that is not clear from the way that it's currently drafted, it may be worth just refining that to make it crystal clear.
I don't know. I look at the definition of complainant and it addresses, uses the term sexual harassment. Under the definition of complainant, you say, oh, what sexual harassment? Like I mean below, there it is. Same thing with, or sexual violence. What sexual violence, well, it's defined below. Even though it may not be used anywhere, it's used, in my opinion, to explain the definition of complainant as it's written. That's how I saw this. Then it's further defining the term complainant when it says in the second line, including acts of sexual harassment or sexual violence, you say, what are those two acts? Well, they're defined below. That's how I saw this. And in many cases, like contracts read like this. They'll have a definition and then terms within that first definition are explained below and other definitions. So I didn't see a problem with it, even though it may not be referenced anywhere else in the document, it's needed to explain the complainant. That's how I saw it.
If that's your interpretation and if counsel is okay with having something defined within the definitions without being referenced, again, it's that I saw a reference to the other two definitions and that one continuously throughout the document and that one just didn't appear. So it piqued my interest as to whether or not it needed to still be in the definitions if we were calling it out within the rest of the document. That was just more of a comment, it wasn't that I was necessarily committed to making up to brush. So if counsel and everyone is fine with leaving it as is, I have no problem with it. So I'll just go on to my second one.
Sure.
So let me get down just so I'm looking at it specifically. So at one point in the document, there was a list of types of information that a complainant would make either orally or in writing. And the second one is the name, and they do do a good job of saying the contents of a complaint generally should include, and then the second one is the name of the alleged perpetrator. Is it true that in Title IX, you don't necessarily need to identify the perpetrator in order to, or name a perpetrator in order to actually leave the Title IX complaint? I'm just, the reason I ask this, because I'm wondering if this would, if by identifying that you would encourage more individuals, specifically children or youth, to come forward and make complaints if they didn't feel that, so that they could get those services, but not necessarily feel like they needed to go through this remediation process? It's just a thought.
Would you like me to, of course, I'll briefly respond to explain, to answer your question, no, to make the Title IX complaint, you definitely can give all this information, some of this information, or whatever information you're comfortable giving, as long as you put somebody on notice that you believe you've been a victim of some form of sex-based discrimination. That being said, and once such a complaint is made under this policy and under the law, would trigger a responsibility to conduct an investigation. That being said, the department's ability to conduct an investigation would be strictly limited without the name of the alleged perpetrator. And it's what I find, I believe that if a student were unwilling to provide the name, it's unlikely that the result of the investigation could be a finding of a policy violation because, as you'll see, much of the policy is geared toward providing an opportunity for the respondent to share or respond to any allegations that may against them. So without that information, the district can't then know the speed of the respondent to obtain both sides of the story. So while, yes, definitely it may be appropriate under the circumstances to speak with the student about interim measures while the investigation is ongoing, I think it may just obviously maybe difficult for the department to come to some permanent resolution or permanent remedial measure such as disciplining your student or whoever the perpetrator may be without that information. That's my turn.
Anyone else?
Chairman, just to underscore, one of the most important things that we needed to include was the naming of a Title IX coordinator, which we haven't gotten in the past. So that was important to do.
But it's, the person named is, it's not a, it's the position.
Position, right.
Right. Because in the draft, we had a name in the draft, but I'm glad to see that that's the position that carried to the final draft. Anyone else? Dr. McGee, go, go.
Chairman Borje?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kadeskis?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve student exclusion policy for first passage. This is, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Mrs. Kadeskis, vice chair Burke, hold for you.
Mr. Chair, first committee, just so for reference purposes, it's listed as student exclusion on the agenda, but somewhere along the line, it should be titled student discipline policy, just so you're aware, we are talking about plus student policy. This policy is intended to incorporate the current status of the law and broadening around student discipline, especially in the areas of in-school and out-of-school suspension. RIDE has withdrawn all regulations or guidance around student exclusion effective December of 2018. We're lucky to have two broadening statutes that seal up the right of all students and staff to escape from the state of school environment and a limitation in the use of out-of-school suspensions. To summarize, out-of-school suspensions are limited to situations in which a student has committed disciplinary and graduate, and, one, is a disruptive student, which is defined as exhibiting a persistent conduct that substantially impedes the ability of other students to learn or substantially interferes with the rights of other students or staff to attend in or work in a safe and secure environment, conducive to learning and free of threat. And the student has failed to respond to corrective rehabilitative measures such as mediation, conflict resolution, restorative practices, positive behavioral interventions and supports. Or, number two, the student represents a demonstrable threat to staff and students as determined by the Minnesota Education Department Threat Assessment Policy. Through our many discussions of this policy, we all agree that this is clearly RIDE's attempt to using legislation to create an in-school suspension program for all schools in the state. The policy did come out of committee with a unanimous vote to present it to the school committee, but the concerns expressed by some of the administration present that right now with a middle school has an alternative education plan for an in-school suspension program. Elementary schools do not have in-school suspension programs, nor does the high school actually have an in-school suspension program. So clearly, this is something in the road for this policy. If conducted, we'd have to address still those issues around in-school suspension. But essentially, it's the opinion of the guidance we received from legal that we need to, as a school committee, our responsibility is to foster policies in accordance with state law and hence that's where this policy comes from.
Does the policy then require, I mean, even though we don't have a classroom in elementary and high schools, does the district now, if once this is passed the second time, does the district then have to institute these programs? How is this, how do we see this? Because if we only have the middle school abiding, then.
By state law, here's the problem, by state law, we are required to provide an out-of-school suspension to provide education for a child with an in-out of school suspension.
Right.
We need to do the same thing for a child with an in-school suspension. And that's essentially where the question comes from. Because the administrators, there were two elementary school principals who both expressed concern that essentially, in school suspension, students in the elementary school end up in the office supervised by a principal because there is no classroom to send them to. And the back to program at the high school is inappropriate for students who are in an in-school suspension, if I remember correctly. If you layer on my correct.
So the high school, so, thank you, so the high school, there's an in-school suspension program there where we all sure is the students that are suspended out of school at the middle school are offered the opportunity to attend that program. If they choose not to, then they don't, the high school, if the student's suspended out of school, they're not afforded that opportunity. So that's something that we would need to consider. But as you stated, as you said, the elementary level, there isn't in-school suspension. So that may well be something that we look at moving forward to provide, you know, that opportunity between, you know, losing a privilege to an out-of-school suspension. There's really nothing in between.
I think at the time that these policies were all developed, no one really was contemplating students in elementary school receiving out-of-school suspension or even in-school suspension. It just wasn't something that was contemplated because behaviors weren't rising at that level and now they are.
So the second passage probably will be next week. Now, next meeting, when, how fast can we implement this policy? I mean, I know you don't have a date certain, but it would seem that we would have to move on this fairly quickly.
So we can still suspend out-of-school students.
Sure. It's the ends, right.
So what, so the adoption of this policy, right now, we don't have to have an in-school suspension for elementary. I would think that it would be something that we would want to consider as we move forward as just sort of that in-between consequence from, you know, as I said, losing a privilege to an out-of-school suspension. There's nothing in this policy that says we have to have it. It's, it would be something I think that we need to have a conversation about possibly doing that. Now, if we, when we have that conversation, then we're taking into account now, you know, we have seven elementary schools. If we're going to potentially create an in-school suspension room, then you're looking at adding staff because you're going to have to have, the principal can't man that classroom by her herself. There isn't any other staff member in the building that would be available all day because of in-school suspension. It's typically a student is in school suspension for the entire day. There went through some instances where it's broken up, but for the most part, you'd have to have an adult in there making sure that the students are, number one, being supervised and number two, are they're doing some constructive work. So it's not, this policy, the adoption of this policy isn't based on having to put that in a place right now, but I think it's a conversation we should probably start having.
Very good. Anyone else?
Vice Chair Burke?
There we go.
The purpose of the law that we have to address in this policy, the purpose of the law was to cut down on out-of-school suspensions. One of the districts in the state had a great deal of them and they wanted to decide by the way to incorporate more in-school suspensions rather than out-of-school. And it's just not a one-sided concern either, it's also a national concern in education as well, to sort of find ways to avoid out-of-school suspensions except for those significant areas and try to incorporate more in-school suspensions as well as adding now the story justice. So there's a lot of different mechanics that are going on trying to change the behavior of what schools do in light of the behavior of students.
And I agree with that and, but right now, the only in-school suspension where we have it is, is in schools and high schools.
High school does, because high school has a program.
If I may, I don't mean to step on anybody's toes, but I just don't want us to lose focus. The focus of this policy is to clarify and memorialize in writing that we are complying to the state law, that we are restricting out-of-school suspensions to very narrow issues. That's the purpose. I bring up the in-school suspension and addressing that problem because I think it's a natural flow for this policy, but it is not part of this policy right now. Right now, this policy is intended to say, you can only give a student an out-of-school suspension if you can check all of these boxes. And that's, the language is taken directly from the statute. So it is clear that those are the restrictions that we have. Just to make sure everyone understands, I didn't take the money of the water, but I mentioned the in-school suspension and the altered education plan that we really don't have any place yet. I think we all, this will be discussed again yesterday, we all have an eye towards developing something, it just isn't there yet, but that's not the focus of this policy.
See, I'm glad you said that because on page two is, number two is procedures governing on school suspensions. So it's right there.
It is. In terms of the notice that's given to a child and a parent, a child is grown in, there's an opportunity to need the child to explain whether they give in school suspension, but that's not the focus of the policy. The focus of the policy is the limitation on out-of-school suspensions. What that is done, intended to do, and I could be wrong, maybe turning the table has a different feel of it, but my understanding of why that might which is included is because we want to clarify exactly what happens, what a student receives an in-school suspension, what notice they're given, how parents are notifying if a child has an in-school suspension because parents might not otherwise know the child's still going to school. So if you put notice policy, notice provisions in place that account for the event, the difference having children taking a feeling refer to this policy to find out how to do that.
Very good. Anyone else?
Yeah, just a question.
Mrs. Nato?
Okay. Is in-school suspension, is cruel detention, do they still have after-school detention?
So the middle school and the high school, they do have after-school detention.
Yeah.
Yes, the elementary schools don't because there's really, for a variety, since the age of the kids, especially if students can take a bus, that can be challenging and just they're having a staff member there to man the detention or at the middle school and the high school. At the high school, the deans are the staff members who do the detention. And at the middle school, I believe it's the. middle school, I believe it's the in-school suspension teachers who oversee the detention after school.
But what's the difference? How do they determine what's an in-school suspension and what's a detention?
So it's based on the infraction, so, you know, a minor disruption would be detention, a major disruption would probably rise to the level of an in-school suspension. There's, it's really the level of egregiousness of what the students do.
I haven't seen how it works, could work at an elementary level, because if you have staff on board and you have no students, you know what I'm saying, how do they work that? You have staff and you don't have anybody, you have suspension. Don't you have to have a steady clientele to make it work?
You hope the clientele is as minimal as possible, but yes, I see what you're saying. Right, that's why having a staff member, that would be all that they would do, they would, you know, man that in-school suspension room, and, you know, they might be days, hopefully that there aren't any students in in-school suspension. That's not the case, unfortunately, at the middle school and the high school, middle schools and the high school because of just the population or the sheer number of students, typically, they're busy in those in-school suspension rooms, as the middle schools call the classroom themselves. And it's, it's more than just having the kids go there and do work, and they're there to do work, teachers send out work, but there's also a piece to it that sort of tries to get students to understand what they've done and hopefully try to rectify it through their restoring practices which we're using in the district.
At the risk of sounding overly legalistic about this, one, one way to look at the policy is help to understand what the difference is between a suspension, whether in school or out of school, and another form of discipline such as a detention is, under the compulsory attendance clause, all students are required to attend school, and all students have a right to be educated a certain number of hours by state law. When you suspend a student, you exclude them from their regular educational program, and you are depriving them of what they would otherwise have a right to. That's why most of the policy that is for you is focused on the procedures that was supposed to follow before they excluded a student from the regular educational program. And by that I mean their regular classes, the regular day-to-day schedule that they follow. So whether you're putting them on an in-school suspension or an out-of-school suspension, whatever that ends up looking like practically in terms of the alternate education programming, the point is that you're removing them from their regular school, and therefore, they're entitled to due process before you can take that away from them. Detention, on the other hand, you're requiring them to stay for more school, so it's different legally from these suspensions because it's not a deprivation. And so the focus on this policy is the deprivation, the removal from the regular educational programming, and how you do it, when you can do it, what are the infractions that you could provisively do out-of-school suspension for, and then what are the procedures that you have to follow before you can impose any of those serious consequences? I hope that makes sense.
That makes a lot more sense, because that's why we've got both in here. It's your blocking of whether they're going to be out of school or they're in school, suspended either way, here are the procedures that we're going to follow, that must be followed before we do that.
That makes sense.
This is Capwell.
Thank you so much. So to follow on that, I, then I, two minor things that I think would help maybe clarify this if on both the contact piece and the suspension, or the suspension. In section two, where it's procedures governing in-school suspension, one of the revisions was that the principal shall contact the student's parents or legal guardian within one day. Is it too much to say, I guess, is the point that the principal has to make contact, or is it just he has to, or she or she has to physically make the contact attempt and then be able to show, I either sent an email, sent a letter, or placed a phone call? Because then it does go down at one point to say that the principal must maintain record, so I'm just wondering if there needs to be a bit more clarification around, is it the principal has to contact, or the principal actually has to make contact that's verifiable?
I can try to speak to that. So we talked about the fact that when a student is assigned in-school suspension, the administrator, whether it's the principal, or the assistant principal, or the dean, they make an attempt to contact the parent. What typically, or sometimes will happen, and again, we're talking about the secondary level, is, let's say, in the morning, first period after the second period, something happens, and then the student is assigned in-school suspension, the administrator or dean make an attempt to reach the parent, whether it's through a phone call or an email, and sometimes they're just unable to reach them, and it can't wait, the student needs to be placed in the in-school suspension room. And here, it also stated that, that the in-school suspension notification would be mailed to the parent, and we talked about that, and in that situation, if it's happening on that day, and you mail it, it may or may not get to the home because unfortunately, many addresses are, or I shouldn't say many, but some addresses are incorrect in the system, and people move, and they don't notify the school about your change of address. So the parent wouldn't get it until perhaps two or so days after the in-school suspension was served. So they try to reach out through email, through phone conversation, but they also give a copy of the in-school suspension form to the student to take home, and that in itself sometimes doesn't happen because, you know, you're not going to, most students are not going to just, you know, run to the door and say, hey, you know, here, here, mom, here, dad. So that was the rationale for that, for taking the mailing out of it. But so to answer your question, there needs to be an attempt.
Okay. So then the language as it stands is completely accurate, because it doesn't, you don't need to actually contact the parent, it just needs to.
Right, because it's sometimes impossible to do that, to keep the record.
Anyone else?
I think I just had one more point of clarification.
Mrs. Capwell, please.
So under pre-suspension hearing, it is noted in the document in section three for the procedures governing out-of-school suspensions that a demonstrable threat qualifies a student to be excluded from the school immediately. And so under the section where it's a pre-suspension hearing, and it says, no student shall be excluded from the school without an opportunity for a hearing, do we need to add, with the exception of those that pose a demonstrable threat, or does that get, is that automatically covered by the top header of procedures governing out-of-school suspensions? It's covered?
The way that I, the way that I read the language would be covered, as long as the student has an opportunity for a hearing, whether that be before the exclusion is served or within the first three days, that you comply to the policy, I think. But have you revised, if, you know, you're reading it and it looks like it's not clear?
Because it fell under pre-suspension hearing, the way that it read to me was that the student would have the opportunity, and with the exception of the demonstrable threat, they're not getting that three day for removing them from the school immediately. That's, I would just say to make that clarification for us to be safe, that no parent would come back and say, you took my child out of school, this was unclear, that would just be my suggestion.
I think I agree with that, and I would actually recommend modifying slightly the headings A and B to remove.
Let me ask you this, so you're making an amendment to take out the word pre, what are we doing? Calon?
Well, I would recommend that if a member did wish to amend the policy for you, that the amendment be to strike the word pre in the heading or in section three, subsection A, where it currently says pre-suspension notice, and to also strike the pre under section three, subsection B, where it currently says pre-suspension hearing, to alleviate any ambiguity regarding whether these procedures only apply when the exclusion is, when the hearing and the notice are taking place before the exclusion is imposed.
As the policy is written, depending on the reason for the out-of-school suspension, it, the principal would need to either hold the hearing in advance of imposing the suspension and requiring the student to stay out of school, or they'd be required to hold it within three days of setting the student up, depending on the reason for the suspension. And so eliminating pre in subsections A and B would make it clear that these procedures apply in both circumstances.
I read that it would apply anywhere, so what am I missing? I'm missing something, because it seems to me that.
Chairman, my only, I guess, my only point, and maybe if you, maybe there is a clarification that I would need, is that would a, if you go through the policy and you have a student that has posed a demonstrable threat, where it states in section three for procedures governing out-of-school suspension, that a student faces an out-of-school suspension on the basis that they are a disruptive student, shall not be required to serve, sorry, let me go down, student faces an out-of-school suspension on the basis that they are a demonstrable threat, may be excluded from school immediately, provided that they, that the student or his or her parent receives a pre-suspension notice and hearing. So maybe you might correct, is it stated already in three, and I'm making a big to-do about that?
It's like it's fair.
It is stated in three, but if it creates ambiguity, that then these are called pre-suspension and pre, pre-suspension notice and hearing.
But it's still, if you take away the pre, it's still, to me, the same ambiguity. The child is being taken out now, and then you're going to have suspension notice and suspension hearing, but we're saying provided that the student, so you can't eliminate them until you do, you have the suspension hearing and notice.
So when, so when we take a student out, I think that that's where I'm realizing the point of clarification, is when we remove the student immediately, there's a demonstrable threat, they still get a pre-notice and a pre-hearing?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Was it three, okay, got it, three days.
I'm just saying, that's how I read it.
Okay, I think that that, I think that that clarifies it for me perfectly.
Okay. Anyone else? Please. Dr. McGee, local.
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kadeskis.
Yes.
And so this policy is passed on a five-to-nothing vote for first passage. Next, final item, I believe, is, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the appointment of a building committee member. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as part of our five-year capital improvement plan, the district has to and has created a building committee to oversee that process, and the, excuse me, one of the members of the committee that we had selected, we were told by the department that because of their, their position that they currently have, they were, they were sort of working for the district to basically oversee much of the day-to-day work that's going on, we could not use that person. So what the, what RIDE is looking for is to have some community member that serves in some capacity or serve in a capacity that would have an engineering or architectural background. So we did reach out to a gentleman in the community whose name is Mr. Dan Peliquin, and he agreed that he would, if approved, to serve on this building. So I have his name here before the committee for your approval.
Mr. Chan, now, Mr. Dr. McGee. Dan Peliquin, I've known him for thirty, forty years. He's an engineer, he's an architect, he's done a lot of work at the stadium, he's done a lot of work in the city on various commercial and private projects. He's well-known, his work has been impeccable, you'll find him to be very thorough, meticulous to a fault, and so he is excellent to be working on facilities. But he's done, basically, those of you who had a chance to go and visit the stadium conservatory, that's him, he's the one who really designed it, as a matter of fact, he had a crew, he volunteers at the stadium on the tech crew. But every Tuesday for months, and I'd say over a year, they knocked down the walls, they stayed up, he planned in the first, second, third, and fourth floors of the stadium conservatory, looking back, new marvel, considering this is the old Arthur Darman building that was full of offices of dentists and doctors and dentists, and now, voila, it's a miracle what he's done with it. So I show him a bright idea as a member of the building. Any other comments? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kadeskis.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to adjourn at eight forty-seven?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We don't? Thank you so much.
You do.
Take your own.